Good evening and welcome to the January 21 organizational meeting of the Board of Education. At this time, I'd ask everyone to turn off their cell phones and please join, stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I'll ask Member Baker to take roll call.
I'd be happy to. President Singer, here. Scott McFarland, he is absent. Member Baker, here. Member Blasey?
Here.
Whoops. Member Friddell?
Here.
Member Lotterbach?
Here.
And Member Roush?
Here.
Great, we have a quorum. Thank you. All right, first order of business tonight, we'd like to take ceremonial oath of office. When candidates were elected into office, they had to come into the admin center and take the oath of office within 10 days, but as a ceremony, we like to do this now so that our public can hear us take the oath of office. So Cindy, could you help us out?
John, Phil? Can I just stand right in front of the door? All right. Just repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Member.
Of the Office of Member.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
Of Midland Public Schools.
Of Midland Public Schools.
Midland County, Michigan.
Midland County, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, and welcome, John and Phil. It's exciting to have you on the board with us. Now into the next order of business is election of an acting chairperson. So the election of an acting chairperson who will conduct the meeting until the president has been elected. Past practices has been that the previous year's president conducts this part of the meeting. So is there a motion that I serve as acting chairperson until the election of a chairperson has been complete?
So moved.
Support. Moved by Friddell, support by Baker. Any discussion? Seeing none, going to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Second order of business is that for the acting chairperson to adopt a secretary as a temporary secretary until a secretary of the board has been created, and I would like to appoint, I'll appoint Lynn Baker to be our temporary secretary. All right, going into identification of the district's legal status. Item two, this is for information, so under the revised school code, MCL 380.1, the district's legal status was defined as a general power school district effective July 1 of 1996. So this is just for information. Going into item three is the election of officers of the board. And just to let you know how that happens is, at the first meeting in November, the board appoints by concession, or consensus, a three-person nominating committee. All the board members submitted their preferences to that nominating committee. The nominating committee then prepared a prospective slate of officers, and I contacted the members involved for their approval prior to the organizational meeting where the election of the committee assignments are finalized. And then after that point, then I'll appoint members of the committees. So at this time, we'll move into action, recommended for action, as outlined in the board policy, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the slate that the nominating committee proposed. So the slate is President, Ms. Pamela Singer; Vice President, Mr. Scott McFarland; Secretary, Ms. Lynn Baker; and Treasurer, Ms. Mary Friddell. Moved by Lotterbach?
Support.
Support by Friddell. And at this time, is there any discussion or additional nominations? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote, all in favor of approving the recommended committee, I'm sorry, the recommended slate of officers. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, very good, thank you. And now we move into item four, which is appointment for study committees. Item 4.1 is for information, 2019 study committee appointments. Administrative services will be Brad Blasey as the chair, John Lotterbach, and Lynn Baker. The curriculum instruction and assessment committees will be Lynn Baker as chair, Mary Friddell, and Phil Roush as members. The finance facilities and operations committee will be Mary Friddell as chair, Pam Singer, and Scott McFarland. And the human resources committee will be Scott McFarland as chair, John Lotterbach, and Phil Roush. Other committee appointments will be for the 2019 district school improvement committee, Phil Roush; for the 2019 Gerstaker Teacher Proficiency Award, John Lotterbach; for the 2019 distinguished service award, oh, did I?
Did that right.
Okay. Mary Friddell; and for the 2019 advisory board on instruction on sex ed, Scott McFarland. And that, now we move into item five, which is scheduled meetings for the 2019 calendar year. Item 5.1, recommended for action, the Board of Education is required to give public notice of the dates of its regular meetings and of any special meetings. The recommended regular scheduled meetings of the Board of Education of the Midland Public Schools for 2019 are listed in your agenda. All meetings are held at 7:00 PM at the Midland Public Schools Administration Center, and dates of special meetings or changes in the dates of the regular meetings will be posted at least 18 hours prior to the time of the special rescheduled meetings. The superintendent or designee is authorized to post notices of meetings at the discretion of the Board of Education, and you can see in your agenda all the dates of the Board of Education meetings. And in June, we'll have two meetings because one includes a budget workshop. Item six, 2.18, item six, 2018 appointments, designations?
We need that for action.
Oh, that's for action, I'm sorry. All right, I would accept a motion for approving the calendar for the 2019 school year, Board of Education. Moved by Lotterbach?
Support.
Support by Friddell. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of accepting the schedule as stated? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And it carries. Thanks, Cindy. Moving into item six, which is 2018 appointments, designations, and Board of Education matters. This is also recommended for action. Item 6.1.1 is appointment of the Board of Education's legal counsel. The firm Postnack, Dyer, and Knar, and Gershaw, La Pointe, and Butler, Lusk, Albertson, PLC, and Thrun Law Firm have been designated as the board's legal counsel. In addition, the superintendent is authorized to retain special legal counsel through other legal firms as appropriate. It is recommended that the board approve legal representation as outlined through December 31, 2019. At this time, I will accept a motion for the appointment of the Board of Education's legal counsel.
So moved.
Support. Moved by Lotterbach, support by Roush. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote, all in favor of approving the appointment of the Board of Education legal counsel. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And it passes. Item 6.1.2 is fiscal designation and authorization. It is recommended that the board designate Chemical Bank and any other public depositories qualified in accordance with the MCL 380.1221, the revised school code of Michigan, as approved depositories of the school district's funds through December 31, 2019. The Treasurer of the Board of Education is the legal financial officer for the school district, and as such, is authorized to sign checks for Midland Public Schools. The Superintendent and Associate Superintendent for Finance are the only members of the staff authorized to sign checks for the Midland Public Schools. It is recommended that the board approve this authorization through December 31, 2019 for these staff members. So at this time, I'll accept a motion for item 6.1.2, fiscal designation and authorizations.
So moved.
Support. Moved by Lotterbach, support by Roush. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote for, to approve fiscal designation and authorizations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Say nay. And it passes. Item 6.1.3 is personnel authorizations. The board, in previous years, has authorized the superintendent or his designee to sign any legal document relating to personnel actions, which the board has approved. This authorization has been made at the organizational meeting for the entire year rather than granting the authorization at each board meeting. It is recommended that the board continue this authorization through December 31, 2019 to the superintendent or his designee. It is further recommended that the board delegate authority to accept resignations, retirements to the superintendent of schools or his designee through December 31, 2019. Resignations, retirements will be reported in subsequent agendas. I'll now accept a motion to approve item 6.1.3, personnel authorizations.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Friddell, support by Lotterbach. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote, all in favor of approving personnel authorization. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And it carries unanimously. Item 6.1.4, hard cap for employees' medical benefit plan. Public Act 152 of 2011 limits a public employer's expenditures for medical benefit plans. Under the act, a public employer that offers or contributes to a medical benefit plan for its employees is prohibited from paying more of the annual cost or illustrative rate, and any payment for reimbursement of co-pays, deductibles, or payments into health savings accounts or similar accounts used for health care costs than a total of $6,685.17 times the number of employees with single-person coverage, $13,980.75 times the number of employees with individual and spouse coverage, plus $18,232.31 times the number of employees with family coverage. Administration recommends that the board reaffirm the district's commitment to pay no more than the hard cap for the employees' medical benefit plan per calendar year 2019. I'll now accept a motion for item 6.1.4, hard cap for employee medical benefit plan.
So moved. Support.
Moved by Lotterbach, support by Friddell. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote, all in favor of approving hard cap for employees' medical benefit plan. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Moving into item 6.1.5, administrative assistant authorization. It is recommended that the superintendent's designee, the administrative assistant to the superintendent, be authorized to assist the secretary of the board in election matters through December 31, 2019. I will accept a motion for item 6.1.5, administrative assistant authorization.
So moved.
Moved by Friddell.
Support.
Support by Roush. Any comments or discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote for item 6.1.5, administrative assistant authorization. All those in favor of supporting it, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Say nay. And that passes unanimously. We've reached the end of our organizational meeting. At this time, I'm open for a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Friddell, support, who did the support come from? Lotterbach, all in favor?
Aye.
And we adjourned. Now we'll move right into our regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. I might need a drink of water after all that, though. Okay, so, welcome to our regularly scheduled January 21 Board of Education meeting. At this time, I would like our Secretary Baker to take role.
Be happy to. President Singer?
Here.
Vice President McFarland? Absent. Secretary Baker, here. Treasurer Friddell?
Here.
Member Blasey?
Here.
Member Lotterbach?
Here.
And Member Roush?
Here.
Great, thank you, Lynn.
Okay, you might want to note that Scott's absent tonight because of a medical condition, so.
Yeah, very, thank you. Scott McFarland had a medical condition, and he could not make it to tonight's meeting. He will be here, he plans to be here at our next meeting, and our thoughts and prayers are with him.
So moved.
So we'll move into item two, which is our consent agenda. Are there any items that anyone would like to remove to the consent agenda? Okay, I will accept a motion, actually, to approve the consent agenda. Items 2.1, approval of the minutes. Item 2.2, persons recommended for employment. Item 2.3, administration that recommends a renewal of the adult ed cooperative agreement between Bullet Creek and the district. Approval of item 2.4, which is a payment of the school system's bills, and approval of item 2.5, which is legal invoices for payment. And I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Support.
Moved by Lotterbach, support by Roush. And all in favor of, all in favor of approving consent agenda. Say aye.
Aye.
All right. Item three, now on to, I'll turn this over to Mr. Sherrill for some special awards.
Our shining star we're gonna recognize today is Mary Zeitler. Mary, would come on up. She gets to stand by me while I read all kinds of good stuff about you, Mary, so. Mrs. Zeitler joined MPS team in 1991 as an English teacher at Jefferson Intermediate School. Her entire 28-year MPS career has been spent teaching English to the Jefferson Huskies. A former coworker once said, "Mrs. Zeitler is a fantastic teacher. Her classroom is filled with activity from the moment class starts until she releases students. Students know the goals of the day, work hard to attain them, and are then able to review the material. Mrs. Zeitler is a valuable member of the Jefferson Middle School staff. Mary earned her Bachelor's of Science in English from Central Michigan University in 1991, and her Master's Degree in Middle School Classroom Teaching from Saginaw Valley State in 1998. Mrs. Zeitler was nominated for a shining star by an MPS parent. Among her comments were the following: Mary has a passion for engaging her students that goes well beyond just teaching them from the syllabus. She is constantly looking for books and activities to engage the curiosity and thirst for exploring the literary world. The students truly enjoy her class. Mary also heads the Young Writers Club in collaboration with Alda B. Dow Home and Studio. The enrichment program allows students to explore writing in an inspirational environment. She is truly devoted to teaching. Congratulations, Mary."
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Our second shining star is not here tonight, but I'll read a little bit about her.
So Tracy Renus is one of our paras. Mrs. Renus joined the MPS staff in 2010 as an assistant teacher in the kindergarten complement program at Plymouth Elementary. In 2012, Tracy joined the paraprofessional team at Plymouth and has assisted students and teachers in Title I Special Education as a noon supervisor and many other areas. Tracy was nominated for a shining star by MPS staff member as well as a parent. Among their comments were the following: Mrs. Renus is always looking for our children, looking out for our children and keeping them safe. When my two sons were fighting and went in hold hands in the parking lot, she asked one of them to hold her hand, and she got us to the car safe and sound. Mrs. Renus is positive, organized, caring, calm, and encourages independence while she, while always knowing when the additional support is needed. She goes out of her way to help not only her one-to-one students, but all students in the classroom, on the playground, and the lunchroom. Mrs. Renus is a team player and a pleasure to work with. So congratulations, Tracy. And the second presentation we have tonight is in front of you. As you may recall, our veteran board members and our new board members, January, welcome. January, you go right off the bat, you get recognition. January is Board of Education Appreciation Month. You have several items in front of you. You have the wall art, a bright green cards are from the Chestnut Hill 4th grade students in Mrs. Van Hoy's classroom. I think Mrs. Van Hoy is here tonight, so you can thank her and her students. Two of her students, if she brought with her, so thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Beautiful, beautiful messages.
A certificate of appreciation from the administration here, an MPS pen, and then it has been our practice for a while now, we have some library books, new library books that are placed in front of you. They have, some of them have your names in there, and will be placed in the media centers in your honor. So you can take a look at those, take a moment, read them if you want, and then we'll get them back into the library going forward.
Excellent.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. So one more item, the green, maybe pencil holder, is from our teacher, and Cindy's gonna make me say this wrong, you may have to say this right. Tricia Zendrek? Anybody? Nope?
Zendrowski? Zendrowski, something like that?
Yeah. So at Seibert, and it's our art angels made that for you as well.
Thank you.
Appreciate all you do and the many hours you put in and some of these meetings that we're gonna have in the future here, so thank you very much.
Right, it's always wonderful to be recognized, and every year that we've received cards from kids, and they've taken the time to write such meaningful comments to each of the board members, so we sure appreciate the students taking part and reaching out to us. It means a lot, and all the artwork is surely appreciated. And I heard Mary McFarland saying tonight, she, Mary Friddell, saying tonight that she was gonna read the books before she was gonna let anyone else take a look at them, so thank you. Thank you for the books, and we look forward to dropping those off at the schools as well. Does anyone else have any comments they'd like to add?
It's just, it's always a pleasure to be honored for something that I feel truly blessed to be a part of this board, to be part of such a great school district, and it's the parents and the teachers and all the employees that make it happen, so it's great.
We would really love it if we could get a quick picture of the girls hurried out of tennis, take it over here inside.
Very good.
If we could do it.
Oh, that would be great.
Allison and Kayla. Kayla, come on, come on in here.
How are you? I'm glad you came out.
Allison, is that it? Yeah, and Kayla. Nice to meet you.
Hi. Thank you. Thank you.
Just get right in the center.
This is gonna be our first picture of this board together, you know?
Yeah, I love this.
Very good, thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
So nice.
All right, are we ready to get back to business? Moving into item three, which is, 3.3, which is for action. Tonight, we have the asbestos abatement at Adams Elementary. Mr. Cooper?
Yeah, not that that's hard to follow, any of that stuff, but here's some asbestos abatement for you. As you know, we start Adams as the remaining elementary school to be worked on, and of course, the abatement's one of the early things that gets done as it's being demoed. Like you have done previously, NOVA is the company that works for us and supervises all the abatement. We had three bidders, and the low bid, Quality Environmental Services out of Gladwin, we're recommending for $187,982.
Very good. At this time, I'd accept a motion for action for the asbestos abatement at Adams Elementary.
I'll make a motion to approve the asbestos abatement.
Support. Moved by Mr. Roush, support by Friddell. Is there any discussion?
Just one quick question, the bid includes the IH, Industrial Health, and everything else to monitor while they're doing the cleanup?
Yeah, includes, it's the complete pack, and not that they don't sometimes find additional areas they have to bait, and we have to maybe add something on, but it includes everything they've identified.
So in school practice, NOVA is our asbestos consultant. They work for us, they supervise the contractor on site, and they make, do air quality checks the entire time, so they have a scientist there on site who measures that and makes sure his compliance is being followed by the contractor all the way through. They bid it for us, they handle all those specialty areas. That's something our construction manager does not do. That's, by law, you have to have a consultant.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's no more questions, then we'll move to a vote. So to approve this asbestos abatement for Adams Elementary, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And that passes unanimously. We'll move into item 3.4, again, for action. This is the media center furniture purchase for HH Dow High, Midland High, Jefferson Middle School, and Northeast Middle School. Mr. Cooper?
Yeah, this one is, as you know, one of the big projects we're doing this summer, are the four secondary media centers, renovating those, bringing them up to current, I'd almost say, college standards in those areas. This is the same company we've worked with before, Duel. They've actually done all our media centers and will help us finish off Adams, but that will come here in a month or two. All the pricing has stayed very consistent. If you think in terms of what it's cost us, that the elementary schools, Northeast and Jefferson, are right in that ballpark, and they're actually slightly larger than our elementary ones are, and the high schools, not quite double, but when you consider the high school, the amount of furniture and the amount of area in those, it's gonna take more to get those done. I included the drawings, again, they're just drawings, and you can't see all the technology that's gonna be in there too, 'cause it's just the furniture, now the furniture got laid out, but I think sometimes that gets missing, and I just bring you the bid for all the different, you see a total, you don't really get to see what that will look like compared to what you might remember a high school media center looking like. The grand total with Duel out of Howland, $494,651.35, and like I said, that's, for this one, there's a few more furniture bids, though, still to be coming, 'cause we have Adams that we have not gone through yet, but we're recommending at this time, again, we want to make sure that we're ready the best we can at the start of school, so we'll get working on them as fast as we can, even at the end of this year, and we'll certainly try to have, and that's why we want to order the furniture far enough in advance, is to have it ready to go, 'cause that'll be one of the big components of getting it back up and running when school starts.
Great, thank you. This is for action, so I'll accept a motion to approve the media center furniture purchase for HH Dow High, Midland High, Jefferson Middle, Northeast Middle Schools.
So moved. Support.
Moved by Lotterbach, support by Roush. Is there any discussion?
Just wanted to say, looking at the Just wanted to say, looking at the drawings and the proposal, the mobility, the comfort, multi-purpose use, which our media centers now have to be able to do, so it looks spot on.
I have one request, Bob, is that these proposals, are a little bit different than ones that we've had in the past, because they did a lump sum item, or a lump sum line item for the media center furniture. And I wondered if we could, just as supplementary to this, to have the full breakdown, because in the past, we've had two or three pages of the itemized breakdown just to support that number?
We can do that. Usually the supplemental one has been on the other corporation that's been doing our furniture for the maker spaces and the cafeteria tables. DUEL's been basically general and then goes with the drawing. But I can ask him for a breakout on that. We go over that at the time, but when he gives me the quotes, you see what you see. But we know what items are on there from that. But I'll ask him and I'll get that to you.
Okay. It'd just be a supporting document for this.
Yep, absolutely.
I know we have one high school student in the, in the audience that's looking forward to new furniture in the media center. So I think this will be wonderful. Looking at the drawings, I'm very excited about it and seeing the quality of the furniture that we've brought in from the manufacturer, I'm excited to continue working with them. If there's no other comments or discussion, we'll move into a vote. All in favor of approving item 3.4, media center furniture purchase for Dow High, Midland High, Jefferson, and Northeast Middle Schools, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Okay, and it carries unanimously. Moving into item 3.5 for action, again, diesel fuel and no lead gasoline. Does anyone wanna talk about this?
Yeah, I've got that too. So what we have here is a recommendation, a little bit different than we've done in the past. Typically with our fuel, we've done like a spot bid where we go out and bid off lists for three or four companies. We're gonna try this a little differently, so we bid out the price. Price gets set, as it says there, based on the unbranded average of public weeklys. So that's the same, when you bid this out, you're really bidding out that fixed price differential. That's the delivery and, you know, getting it from point A to point B and into our tanks. And so the low bidder, which was .0355 cents for diesel and .0259 for no lead, is the Petroleum Traders Corporation out of Fort Wayne, Indiana. They have offices other places and they work in multiple states. They use third-party local contractors, taking the petroleum out of those areas. So we decided to go with the bid this time. We'll see, it's only a one-year contract, there are two one-year renewals. If this doesn't work out to be more cost-effective, then we can go back to our spot bids. So we're asking you to approve it at this time.
Okay, thank you. So I'll accept a motion to approve the contract to purchase diesel fuel and no lead gasoline for 2019.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Lauterbach, support by Roush. Is there any discussion?
I see in the notes, Bob, it says, talks about short loads and pump. Obviously, pumping the tank is gonna happen every time.
It's actually, and I had to ask the same question you just asked me. The pump in the tank has to do if the pump's not in the ground, which is not, so it doesn't pertain to us. So I guess when they bid it out, they always bid a secondary cost if it's an above-ground fuel tank.
If it's above-ground, they use, actually have to use a pump off the truck. If it's a below-ground, I know this because I grew up in the business, it's gravity feed into the ground, so that's why they charge you a fee for that.
And I did check on the short loads too, because it was my question right away, would that factor in? And typically, the way we fill, that doesn't hit us at all. We're, and that tends to be, we're measuring the tank pretty accurately, we're not filling that frequently, much more diesel than gas. Gas is next one.
So again, that would be a retailer who's trying to keep their tanks full, their capacity's probably day-to-day, and so they try to estimate the day ahead, how much gas they're gonna pump the next day, they order this much. And if they end up where the tank does not hold it, because they didn't pump as much, they charge a short load fee when that comes, because they have to take it back.
So how long, how often do we fill our tanks?
I don't know if I give you...
Two, three times, I think Laurie said.
Yeah, it's not the, the gas, for example, could, could be one big time, because the gas, we're not running as much through. So it's not that frequent.
Okay, if there's no other questions, then we will move into a vote. All those who approve the contract to, for the diesel fuel and no lead gas for 2019, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? And it passes unanimously. So now we move into item four, which is request to address the board. And I believe we have one request. Mark Hackbar?
As you just said, my name's Mark Hackbar, I reside at 1910 Westbury Court in Midland. I teach at Jefferson and I'm president of the Midland City Education Association. First, I'd like to welcome the new members to the board, John Lauterbach and Phil Roush. Excited to have you on the board, looking forward to working with you. And you must think the school bar thing is great, you get showered with gifts at each of the meetings. So, but that's what brings me here, not to shower you with all sorts of gifts, but in our, for School Bar Appreciation Month. The Midland City Education Association, in for-School Board Appreciation Month, has decided to donate seven books by the bestselling author Alan Graz to each of our middle school libraries. If you're not familiar with Alan Graz, he's a former middle school teacher and has written action-packed books that are perfect for middle schoolers. His topics of history and sports and his fast-paced writing style engage even the most reluctant learners. His historical fiction titles like Refugee and Project 1065 also appeal to teachers. They make great read aloud selections and motivate students to read nonfiction articles related to the topics. And they also invite rich classroom discussions on human rights, empathy, personal responsibility, and other meaningful topics. So currently, a small group of ELA teachers at both Jefferson and Northeast are collaborating to create a possible cross-district book study of Mr. Graz's books and possibly even a visit by Mr. Graz. That's still out in the air right now. But, so it's with its sincere gratitude to the MPS Board of Education that the educators of the MCA donate these worthwhile books to our middle school libraries. Again, thank you for your service to our students, parents, staff, and the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
And the best news is, you don't have to take a picture with me. It's okay.
Has anyone read any of Alan Graz's books? We'll have to look into that.
Refugee.
Refugee?
Yeah.
All right. All right, now we'll move into item five, which is curriculum instruction and assessment. We have no meeting minutes, but we do have for action, a major change proposal.
We do, good evening. We're bringing back to you the five major change proposals that were presented for your information at the December meeting. Those include the Elementary World Language Proposal with Mandarin Chinese being taught at Woodcrest and the Four Language and Culture Program at Adams, and that will continue into next year with this approval. Elementary Science Proposal extends our work with the Serial City Science Kits, really rounding out our science curriculum in grades three, five, so all of our elementary schools will have a full science curriculum and that complements Project Lead the Way and our IB PYP program nicely. We have a high school math proposal, which really is a two-year proposal in response to the International Baccalaureate Curriculum Revisions. So we're responding to that and then using this opportunity to update one of our senior level math classes. We're also bringing on an IB science course, environmental science course, so that's the fourth major change proposal. And the fifth one is high school yearbook. We are adding a .3 accelerated option, being in the same section as that .2 offering. So these four, five, excuse me, five proposals are open for your action this evening. And of course, we make sure and inform staff that this is pending final budget approval later this spring.
Very good, thank you. So at this time, I will accept a motion to approve item 5.1 for the major change proposals. So moved. Moved by Mary Friedel?
Support.
Support by John Lauterbach? And is there any discussion?
Very excited about it. Good stuff.
And it's so across the board, Penny, I just think that's so neat, you know, from the elementary and now the language, science, and even the yearbook, that's just, that's exciting to see what the kids will do there. So many business items that go along with that yearbook and a lot of interesting...
Life skills that they use in that class and then of course with math and science. So thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you.
Very good. And we've heard some great things about the Elementary World Language class and the kids in elementary schools. So great things happening all the way around. At this time, we'll vote to approve item 5.1 for the major change proposals. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. And it passes unanimously. And moving into item 5.2 again for action, we have textbook adoption. Do you have that as well?
We do.
All right.
In December, we brought to you for information and for the 28-day open exam period, a text that's to be used in both our 6th grade Spanish as well as our Spanish 1 class. The title of that text is Ghost. We, pending approval, will be purchasing both the English and Spanish version to be used accordingly. This book is, has been vetted by our Spanish teachers and our curriculum specialists and is recommended for your approval this evening.
Great, thank you. And I'll accept a motion for approval of item 5.2 textbook adoption. So moved. Moved by Friedel, support by Baker. And is there any discussion?
I expressed, Penny, that my, the book was great. A lot of good topics addressed within the book. It gives you a good flavor for culture. I'm just concerned about the binding on the book and if we can look into a more durable binding for the book.
Absolutely, we can check into that.
Okay. And we'll move into a vote. All in favor of approving item 5.2, the textbook adoption, say aye. Aye. All opposed? And it carries unanimously. Moving into item six, which is finance facilities and operations, we have 6.1, which is study committee minutes. You can read those?
Yep, I'm reading those. Yes, FFO committee met on January 7th and Mr. Cooper reviewed and discussed the following items with the committee. First, the November financial reports. Second, the Series 2 bond sales timeline. Three, the asbestos abatement bid for Adams Elementary. Four, the furniture purchase for the media centers at Jefferson, Northeast Middle School, and HH Dow and Midland High School. The press box insurance update and timelines for the 2018-19 budget adjustment and the 1920 budget development. And lastly, the student enrollment for the fall of 2018-19 was reported as 7,685.38 FTE unaudited. This is above the 7,634 that was used in budget development. And the next meeting will be Monday, February 4th at 5:00 PM.
Great, thank you. I was very excited to see the numbers, 7,685. Those were great numbers to see and a higher number than what we budgeted for is always a wonderful thing. Moving into item 6.2 is for information, gifts.
No, we have a total of 20 gifts here this month totaling $18,492.64. Wide range from a wide range of groups, but a lot of robotics in this one. And we have donations both from our parents, businesses in the areas, some foundational or parent group funds at the individual schools. We also have three relatively large teacher mini-grants that teachers applied for and received. From the Midland County, it's Gerstacker Teacher Mini-grants. And we also have some of the Youth Action Council, so the community gives, where they did some work there too. So that's just for information tonight. I do have in 6.3, two items for action. The gifts total $105,000. There is the $100,000 STEM Grant installment, three of three, from the Strousacker Foundation. And there's also a $5,000 donation for the purchase of a therapy dog for Central Park Elementary from the Laura Luddington Howlenbeck Foundation. Because of the size of those gifts, those require board approval. And that is the last of the STEM grants that we originally applied for back, I guess it'd be almost three years ago now. You approved one from the Dow Family Foundation back a month ago. So this completes it and the therapy dog has been purchased.
Yep.
Have been trained, but it's been purchased. So those last two require your approval.
Okay, thank you. So I'll accept a motion for item 6.3 to accept the gifts totaling $105,000.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Roush, support. Support by Friedel. Is there any discussion?
Just amazing to see the community support that we have as a district. Just blown away by the, the gifts and generosity of our community, so, awesome.
Absolutely, I would second that. It's been wonderful to see all the STEM grants come in and this being the last one. Just very, very grateful for that and each and every one of the gifts that were given this month is just amazing and, and very much appreciated by the school district.
And I'm excited to see our, our therapy dog when that, when that is put into action. I know my daughter works at a school where there is a therapy dog and it's pretty amazing what that little, little dog does, so.
Luna.
Is that the dog's name?
Luna. Ties right in with the explorers.
I know Judge Allen has a therapy dog and in her annual report, she talks about the positive outcomes from having a therapy dog. And, and one of the comments was, you know, she doesn't usually see a lot of smiles from kids coming into her court and when the therapy dog is there, she sees smiles. And so I'm looking forward to having a therapy dog at Central Park and, and seeing what kind of outcomes we, we see with that as well. All right, moving into, oh, we have to vote. So all in favor of accepting the gifts totaling $105,000, say aye. Aye. All opposed? And it passes unanimously. Item seven for human resources, 7.1.
Yeah, I'll take 7.1. We have condolences to pass along to two families this evening. First, the family of Ward Hodge. Ward passed away on December the 17th. Mr. Hodge was a history teacher at Northeast School for 13 years, retiring in 1979. And then also to the family of Don Marquart, who passed away on November 23rd. He was a history teacher at Northeast for 24 years, retiring in 1993. And I'll also take item 7.2, which is retirements this evening. We have two retirements to announce. The first, pains me to say this, but Mr. Robert Cooper will be retiring on June 30th and his spouse, Ms. Wendy Cooper, paraprofessional at Adams Elementary, will be retiring on June 7th. So we wish you all the best.
Thank you, Robert. We're not going to enjoy watching you walk out, that's for sure. I would like to share something that Mr. Cooper wrote in his letter to us. And he has a professional philosophy and it's to, what he writes is, his professional philosophy was to make a difference, whether to a student, a parent, a staff member, school or school system, whether in academics, personal, or social matters, whether for a moment, a class, a year, or a lifetime, I want to make a positive difference. And I just feel so grateful to have you here and, and serve in the middle and public school district and your service means an awful lot to us. So thank you.
Thank you. And you have made a positive difference.
Okay, and it looks like we're moving into item 7.3, which is Human Resource Study Committee Minutes.
I have those. The committee met on Thursday, December 13th and shared and discussed information regarding beginning contract negotiations with the Midland City Education Association. The current contract expires in August of 2019.
Very good, thank you. Moving to item eight, which is scheduled activities, you'll find all of our board meetings for the... You'll find all of our board meetings for the year are in the agenda and also on our website. We have one a month, except for June, where we have two, one being the Board Workshop, Budget Workshop. Moving into item nine is Correspondence to and from the Board of Education. We have item 9.1, Letters to the, From the Board of Education to Midland Area Community Foundation, Jefferson Parent Advisory Committee, First Great Lakes Bay Region, Midland High School, Class Reunion of '68, Aider Insurance Group, and the County of Midland, Bernstein Fund. So all those letters will, for their gifts, will go out to them. Item 9.2 for information, we have letters to the Board of Education. We have a FOIA request from Mr. Robert Taylor, a FOIA request from Petrolium Traders, and one from Mr. Joseph Stare regarding communications between Woodcrest Elementary. Moving into item 10, we have Study Discussion Sessions. So this is a time where we can go through and have board members talk about items they're grateful for or things they'd like to see us move toward in the future. So Mary, I'll start with you.
Thank you. I'd just like to say again, it's a pleasure serving on the board and being a part of this great district. I taught here for a number of years and was glad that I could continue on in service, and looking forward to a new year here with a new board and that will accomplish and keep this school district running smoothly and continue to set the standards high for the rest of the, for the rest of the state, you know, trying to be the number one school district has always been my goal, so. And I wanted to thank, thank all those people, all those students again, who donated gifts, and looking forward to reading the books and getting those out. I love making the deliveries to the schools and presenting them to the people in the media center. It's a lot of fun, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Brad?
I'd like to say thank you to the shining stars for all of your service in Midland Public Schools. Also like to say thank you for all of the gifts from various students across the board, and also Mr. Hackbarth for his gifts of the books. Just had a special, personal message for the Markort family. Don Markort was my teacher at Northeast and also my JV football coach. He along with Mr. Byron. And they made it fun, and they taught us a lot about football, and great guy. Lots of wonderful stories about Mr. Markort, and he was a favorite of very, of many, many people, and he'll be missed. Mr. and Mrs. Cooper also will be missed. I also have a special sporting tie to Mr. Cooper that I met Mr. Cooper when I was pretty little, and he was the head varsity hockey coach at Midland High School. And my brother Chris played on the team, and whether he remembers it or not, I think I filled water bottles and did whatever I could to assist, and I was just a little guy. So I have a long history, and then also going to Northeast where Mr. Cooper was. And it's been a pleasure working with you past couple of years, and obviously throughout this year will be as well, and wish you and your wife the best. Welcome, John and Phil. Look forward to working with you over the next couple of years. And then best wishes to Scott, to speedy recovery, and we'll hopefully see him back here soon. And out in the public, I guess the only other thing that I could say that I had a chance to go to, both a Midland High hockey game and a Dow High hockey game, very enjoyable. Saw your son. And then also, I think out in the community, another thing is, I believe the tennis classic is coming up here pretty soon, so. Think that's it.
Great. Thank you. Lynn?
Wow. Well, I too will say thank you for all the recognition and gifts for school board appreciation. Even after this many years, people ask me, you know, what do you do? Is it fun? I had a friend call me that I haven't talked to in ages that was from here, from Minneapolis, and she said, "You're still on the school board?" And I said, "Yep, it's still fun, and there's always so many exciting," I hate to use the word "things," but that's true, across the board, there's just all kinds of fun things and new things and exciting endeavors in this district. And that leads me to thank you, Mark, and all the staff, teachers, for your donation. Not only for the donation, but once again, I think we show the creativity and ingenuity talking about, you know, the teachers already talking about doing cross-school and what you're going to do with books, and that's so important. And to all the students, I'm always amazed at the artwork and the creativity and the cards that go along with that. So it's my pleasure to serve, and I look forward to a couple more years. And welcome, our two, Phil and John. I think you'll enjoy it. It's a big, steep learning curve, but we're always learning, so never feel like you're the only ones, because we all continue to learn all the time. And to Bob, you and Wendy, known you a long time, as friends through scouts, as a teacher of my kiddos, and have always appreciated both of your dedication to the school, and I just, we all wish you the best, so you can go spoil those grandchildren, enjoy that family time. It's well-deserved. And to our shining stars, Mary and Tracy, it's always a pleasure to acknowledge those that don't always get well-deserved recognition. And I guess lastly, it's Martin Luther King Day, and another thank you to all the students. There's been a lot going on, and a lot of them were involved in some great programs today to keep Martin Luther King's dream alive, so appreciate that. Thank you, Lynn.
Phil?
First of all, congratulations to the January Shining Stars. It's always great to hear those from Mr. Sharo. And I really appreciate all the gifts, and Mark, thank you to the teachers for donating the books. You know, over the last two and a half months since the election, I've had the opportunity to go around the district with Mr. Sharo and meet students and faculty members and paraprofessionals and teachers and principals, and I'm just blown away by the dedication of our, our employees and just the heart and soul that they pour into the students' development. I have no doubt in my mind that, Mary, we can, we are and can be the number one district in the state, based on the dedication of the employees that we have in our district. You know, over the last week, I took my son to a JV basketball game and a hockey game as well, and, you know, even the volunteer coaches that we have, it's just amazing to see the dedication. And Bob, thank you for your service and congratulations on your retirement. Wish you guys the best, so.
Thank you. Scott?
I'd like to begin by recognizing and thanking Angela Branstad and Patrick Frazee. I wasn't here last month, and I didn't get, you all did, but I didn't get a chance to thank them for their years of service on the board and recognize that. I think Phil and I are getting an appreciation for the amount of work that they put in, and we'd be remiss if we didn't recognize and thank them for that. I also want to thank Mike and the administrative team for helping Phil and I get oriented and up to speed. We have been on a steep learning curve, and it'll keep going, but it's been made a lot easier through your time and patience. I know I joined Phil in saying I'm honored to be able to serve. And to a young guy at Chestnut Hill named Ethan who signed, signed his card, "Your pal, Ethan." He said, "Thank you for making good rules. A lot of good rules, like if we get to go outside." So my commitment to Ethan and all the other kids in the district is I'm going to do my best to earn your thanks. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thanks, John.
Today they might have got to go outside.
That's right. That's right. Today they might have been pushing it.
It was a little chilly.
But I want Ethan to know, I got nothing to do with snow day.
Watch your Twitter accounts. So, thank you. Thank you for all the comments. I won't repeat what's been already said, but very appreciative of the committee that got together for nominations and all the input that the board gave, gave me and the committee a lot of options for where we could place each, each one of us to use our skills to the best of our ability to really serve Midland Public Schools, and I appreciate that. And we were all right in line when we, when the committee got together. It's probably the first time everybody was 100% on, on every person and where, where we wanted to slate them, so it was, it was a really cool process. Great thanks for, for all the cards. January is a clean-out time, so I clean out all my board information for the past year, and so much information and the things that really catch my eye, or the little cards and, and trinkets that the kids give us. And it reminds me, you know, we are in this for the kids. We're trying to make the best possible educational opportunities for our kids and make Midland Public Schools a place that all kids want to come and feel at home. And I'm very excited about the administrators and the teachers and all the educators that are part of that process. And this year, when, when several of us went to the Michigan Association of School Board Conference, we had a speaker talk about, is our district better because of our service? And, and that's what I try to do as a board member, is try to make a positive impact on this district, and that's probably why when I read Mr. Cooper's words, they, they hit home, because I believe each one of us at this board table wants to make Midland Public Schools a better place because we served. So, thank you. Mr. Sharo?
So I look over my Friday letters that I write to you, I see three of the, three of the items has to do with school safety, so I'll quickly mention those. We had our staff members go through ALIS training this past week. They become the trainers of the trainers, and so they'll begin to train staff and adjust our plans according to the ALIS as we go forward. We also now have all the radio's in the district up and running, training on, going on those, and that'll become incorporated more into our emergency operation plans as well as we go forward. And the third item is our school resource officers, the two additional that we picked up through the village is now in place. They have taken, they started on January 7th at our two middle schools and rotating all four officers to cover our elementaries at this point in time. The next piece is Agenda Group Transitions, and Mr., you guys also invited Mr. Cooper, which I'm not going to do yet, because I still need him for six months. I'll tell my stories later on about Bob, but not right now. And so, as you know, we've been planning that for a little while. Bob was very upfront with us, and so Brian and Bob have been in transition while Penny was in transition with Brian, teaching her. And we have internally looked at our candidates for the, Brian's present position, Associate Superintendent. There's four of them that have shown interest. I'll meet with all four of them, and we'll make that decision in the next couple of weeks, and we'll keep everybody informed as we move forward and get that in place, because if, with it being internal, we need to keep moving, because there'll be those positions to fill behind them. And the last thing I have for you, we'll lead right into our closed session. So we have a tentative agreement with the MCA, and so we're going to update you on that, and that's closed session, because we don't share that until they've ratified, and so we hope they ratify until they take a ratification vote, and if they ratify and prove that, then it comes to you in February for approval. So again, very good negotiation process we went through, and I think it was pretty fair to both sides. We'll fill you in those details as we go into closed session tonight.
Very good. Thank you. And at this time, I would accept a motion to go into closed session. So moved. Moved by Lattarock.
Support.
Support by Friddell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and we'll move into closed session. So at this time, everyone will leave, and then when you come back, then we'll just adjourn the meeting. If I have any high school students that want a signature, you're welcome to come up here right now and get your signatures, and closed session won't take that long, I don't believe.